Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. Before we begin, I want to quickly walk us through the agenda for today, and then we'll know exactly what we can expect for the day. First of all, we will start with welcoming remarks from our president, Dr. Parham is here today. Then I'll be joined by interim AVP Ryan Heredia to provide a detailed look at the university's budget. In this section, we'll cover the sources and uses of funds, the process behind budget planning, and review of our 2425 General Operating Fund actuels. We'll also share current fund balances and update on the student success fee, and look ahead at the proposed 24, or final as of a couple of days ago, 2526 operating budget. Finally, we'll close with a Q and A so that we can address your questions. Thanks to our information technology team. Let's give them a round of applause. Because we can live stream today's event, and we have our budget team on standby to try to address your questions online. Before we move into today's agenda, I'd like to begin this public forum with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Tongva Nation and the grounds on which we live, work, and learn in respect, gratitude, and responsibility. We acknowledge that the land on which we are gathered here today is the home and traditional land belonging to the Tongva Nation. Today, we come with respect and gratitude for the Tongva people who still consider themselves the caretakers of this land. It is through their examples that we are reminded of the greater responsibility to take care of Mother Earth and to take care of each other. With that grounding, let's welcome our president to open today's session. Dr. Parham has been an extraordinary leader for CSU Dominguez Hills, guiding our campus through a period of growth, innovation, and transformation. Under his leadership, we've seen our commitment to student success strengthened, our reputation of the CSU system evaluated, elevated, excuse me, and our role in the local community expanded. Today, he will open our session by sharing some reflections and providing an overview of the state of Dominguez Hills. Please join me in welcoming President Parham to the stage.
Thank you, Vice President Wallace. Good morning. It's always interesting, as much as we fought to keep folk out the back of the bus and the back of the room, that people always fill up the back of the room first before the front. So I'm going to invite you, if you'd like, to come down and, right? Fill up and shrink the size of the room. But as I say, "Good morning", I want you to know that it's always an honor and a privilege to come together, particularly as a campus community, faculty, staff, our students, alumni, and friends who are in the room. And every time I stand before you, I'm reminded of the commitment. I'm reminded of the resilience. I'm reminded of the shared purpose that defined who we are at York California State University Dominguez Hills. Now, we gather today at a moment of both great pride and tremendous challenge. We promised to provide forums on transparency, on accountability, and dialogue. And we continue this with our 2526 Budget Town Hall. So we have so much to celebrate in the progress we've made and the lives that we've touched. And at the same time, we've got to recognize the fiscal realities that shape the current environment that we are in. The road ahead is going to be a challenge. Now, across higher education, and right here in our own CSU system, and particularly at our university, we are navigating, what you've oftentimes heard me refer to as a fiscal vortex. We're navigating declining enrollments in a post-COVID environment, and they're beginning to level off thanks to the work by our Student Affairs Team led by Dr. Franklin and others. So we want to celebrate that. The fiscal vortex is characterized also by unfunded mandates that stretch our resources. We have uncertainty about the governor's compact. The CSU-wide compensation increases without full funding to support them from the state. All of those come to put fiscal pressures on this university. And these are the real pressures, and we can't ignore them. But what makes us Toros is that we never let challenges define us. We face them together. We face them with creativity, with determination, and with a focus always on how do we best serve our students and broader campus community. So as we look ahead today, I want us to focus both on truth at once, the weight of our challenges, and the power of our collective will to overcome them. Because here in the Toro Nation, we know that every obstacle that we confront, every obstacle, is also an opportunity to grow, to innovate, and to transform lives. So thank you for being here. Thanks to all of you for what you do. And thank you for believing in what it means to be a Toro. Now, our 2526 commencement exercise has told a powerful story about the importance and the critical nature of who we serve. This past May, more than 4,275 students graduated, with 3,000 little over taking advantage and proudly walking the stage across six ceremonies. So if you look at the slides, among them, Ms. Carolyn Woods. I want y'all to take a look at that face. Every year, I ask the graduates to stand. Where my 20-somethings at? You know, lots of the crowd's standing. Where my 30-somethings, my 40-somethings? And when I get to 50, people go, "Oh, 50", like that's old to be getting a degree. And then we go to 60, and then the crowd starts to go, "Whoa". And then we 70. We got to 70 two years ago. We were at 71. Three years ago, we were at 71. Two years ago, we broke that record, and we were at 76 years of age to women in the audience. This year, this year, that record was broken. So you're looking at Carolyn Woods, and they think, "Courage of another faculty", they said, "Dr. P, go one higher." I said, "Are there any 80-year-olds in the audience?" And this one woman stood up to a thunderous applause from everybody who went berserk in the place. 80 years old, earning her degree. That sounds like an applause line to me. But know what you're applauding for, because it is her story that reminds us that it's never too late to pursue dreams. And that Toro resilience truly spans generations. That spirit of perseverance and achievement has been recognized nationally. And we are proud to be ranked number one in social mobility, affirming that we are not only producing excellence, but transforming lives, and through those lives, helping to transform America. Now, the evidence is clear. Our intentional student successes, our enrollment, our retention efforts are working. Our retention numbers are up. Last year, we gained not two, not three, not five, but a full eight percentage points in retention. Let me say that again. Eight percentage points in retention. That is statistically significant. And I want, in particular, compliment our faculty. I want to compliment our staff who've put in that tireless work. So where our faculty are, and where's Dr. Drummond? Did I see Dr. Drummond come in? Right? Andy Drummond deserves a big round of applause for helping us organize that in his team. And while you're applauding, so do our faculty. Applaud for our faculty who just commit and do tremendous amount of work. And this year, this year, we're poised, right? To gain more than six and a half points for a total of 14.5 points in just two years pending our census verification. So they're extraordinary results, right? That are really nothing short of remarkable. But don't look like your president is surprised. I'm not. Because I know we can do this work. I know you can do this work. And sure enough, we've done it. So thank the Student Success Committee. And if there are any of them in the house, our Student Success Committee, if you would, stand up and be recognized. Where are our Student Success members? Come on, y'all, don't be shy with me. So that's why we are streamlining processes and driving cost efficiencies. We have reduced administrative overhead, restricted travel, carefully analyzed contracts. We shifted to just-in-time ordering and implemented new systems to stretch every dollar we can stretch. Now specifically, the campus developed its first budget modeling and reporting tool called Questica. Who's used it? Right? See a few hands. So Questica is a whole new vibe. So this tool allows fiscal support staff to budget, monitor, and better report resources, right? And uses of that funding. One of the things we find every year, right? And it's been going on long before I got here, is that there's an incongruence between what we have to spend and what people actually do spend. So we have these cost overruns. We can no longer afford that given the challenges that we are in. So those cost efficiencies, I think, are essential. And so, most importantly, these efficiencies have allowed us now, these new efficiencies where I'm talking about, they've allowed us to redirect resources in support of student success. So for example, students can now access integrated payment plans through the implementation of TransAct. And our new IT help desk gives them the ability to walk in and receive immediate support. Right? I love that. And while we strengthen services, we're also transforming our campus. We have four new buildings underway, six overall, but four underway. Classrooms and labs were refreshed this summer in the Court Hall, Social and Behavioral Sciences, and Natural Sciences and Mathematics, and repaving a lot six, even though the state did not provide ending funding for deferred maintenance. We've been asking for that and asking for that list forever, but somehow, mm, we never have the money. We found a way to get it done anyway. So these projects are not just facilities. They're really investments in the future of our students and this entire campus. And none of these projects are funded by general operating funds. Rather, they represent the commitment of our internal and external partners, such as our students, the California Legislative Black Caucus, the College of Continuing and Professional Education, Park and Transportation Services, Southern California Edison, and also the City of Carson, and our generous donors. Every university relies on strategic partners, and we are thankful for them. So if you would, join me in a round of applause for all of our strategic partners. Now for some exciting news. Our new affordable student housing, this is phase four, will provide 288 new beds and a dining commons. It is just going to be a showpiece. Can you just imagine being on a campus and somebody years ago, before I got here, approved a project to put up a 506-bed space facility and not approve a dining hall? And what they said to President Haggin? "I know you need 506 beds. You can build 300 of them and put a dining hall in. Or build the 506 you really need and figure out a way to feed your students." It's like telling a student. It's like telling a senior. It's like telling anybody in our community. You can pay rent. You can buy food. Or you can do your prescription medications, but you can't do all three. That's how they were treating Dominguez Hills. Them days are over, ladies and gentlemen. Them days are over. I come from the school of Marcus Garvey. He said, "Chance never satisfies the hope of suffering people. And it's only through hard work, persistence, and self-reliance by which the oppressed ever realize the light of their own freedom." So we've engaged in a process of self-determination. We have raised more money. We have gone to the legislative. We've worked with different caucuses. We've talked with our strategic partners like Edison. We've created new, right? Partnerships in the community. And that's allowed us to get some of these things done. So why am I excited? Because a $97 million project designed to give students a place to live, eat, and build community is now taking shape at York County State University Dominguez Hills. We've got a new $31 million Southern California Edison electrical substation. And that'll provide the power we need to continue reshaping and modernizing the campus for decades to come. How many of you knew we were out of power? As soon as we put up the INI building, that was the limit of our power base. And Deb Wallace been running around and, right? "How we gonna do it, Dr. P?" Well, we had to get more money. We want to thank the caucus for that, who gave us, right? $20 million of that to be able to put that in place. And now, we'll have power to last into the future. But what about that brand-new Student Health and Wellness Center? Now, this one is a story that I want to deviate from the script a bit because it really is about a culture change on the campus. I went to the caucus. When COVID hit, everybody remember COVID? A million lives lost in America. A lot of them right here in our own backyard. The biggest victims of that disease, black, brown, poor Asian, poor white. While some folk in the White House denied the authenticity that it was going to hit us. COVID, ladies and gentlemen, didn't come running around the corner and say, "Ah, it's somebody black, poor white. Let me get them." They were already vulnerable. Heart disease, pulmonary disorders, obesity, hypertension, and diabetes, top five. And I argued. I said, "The time to teach a people how to be healthy is not when they're 50 struggling with a pandemic, but when they're 25 or 17 on a university campus learning about what health and wellness is about." And the caucus said, "Dr. P, you got a point. Can't give you it all. Here's a $20 million down payment." But one of our most proud of is not my efforts to secure the down payment. But I went to the students. I went to Dr. Franklin. Dr. Franklin, stand up for me. Dr. Franklin led... Keep standing, please. Dr. Franklin worked with the student body to lead an initiative that is one of the most fundamental culture changes I've ever seen since I've been on this campus the last seven and a half years. When I arrived on campus, Deb Wallace, they said, "Don't ask the students for nothing. They're too poor." My staff said that. My faculty said that. Even some other students said that. When I got that $20 million, I went to the student body and President Jonathan "Mancy" Malina. And I asked him. I said, "What you gonna do? I can take that $20 million and leave it there for this Health and Wellness Center, but you students gotta have some skin in the game. Or I'll take it and put it someplace else on the campus that needs it. You got to have some skin in the game." I don't want to hear no more about how much it's going to cost you. What I want to hear about is what are you prepared to invest in your future in this campus? And doggone it, if those students, under the leadership of this vice president here, who put the referendum together and passed the referendum to tax themselves $215 every semester, $430 a year, they tax out of their own pockets that now provided the other $66 million to build what is an $86 million building. That is a culture change on this campus. That's where DH is going. And our students have embraced that mindset in going forward. That sound like an applause line to me as well. Thank you, Dr. Franklin. So that award-winning flagship facility will span three stories and feature a recreation pool, a wellness center, multipurpose courts, free weights, a running track, a welcoming outdoor plaza. And it'll be a true hub of student well-being. It'll also frame, as you see that big bull there, that is the Gil Smith Plaza, named after, right? The first mayor in the city of Carson and one of the founders of the area. And we owe a great deal to he and Shirley, who provided that gift that will help us do that. And so we are grateful for that particular space. And then, with pride, we are bringing our orthotics and prosthetics program back home. I'm tired of paying rent to an off-campus facility, right? That much like you rent an apartment brings you no dividends. So we're done with that. We're bringing it back on campus. We're going to pay our own mortgage and invest in ourselves. So we are bringing orthotics and prosthetics back home to campus after years of renting space in Los Alamos. It's an $11 million classroom and laboratory facility that will allow us to educate and innovate right here where students belong. And if you've ever seen the transforming work that that facility does in literally helping to increase the mobility of people's lives who have lost limbs, it literally will bring tears to your eyes. But that's what we do in the Toro Nation. We transform lives. So we're also breaking ground at the end of the year on the new Diamond Lee Institute and the Think Tank Facility. We appreciate the caucus who has supported us with another $15 million gift for that. And everybody around is looking at Dominguez like, "What Dominguez Hills doing getting all this money?" And my response? Everybody repeat after me. If you don't know, you better ask somebody. Ask somebody what we're doing here, because people are investing in the Toro Nation. Now, we know we continue to face serious fiscal headwinds in what we have been characterized as a fiscal vortex, including declining enrollments across higher ed, unfunded mandates, insufficient state support, and compensation pressures. But we will not be defined by what we have lost. We will be defined by what we continue to achieve together. That, to me, is what's important. So as we look ahead, let's remember the story of Mrs. Woods. Let's remember that every student we serve represents persistence, represents possibility, and represents promise. Together, my friends, we can build a university that does more than endure challenges. We rise through them. We transform through them. And we continue to deliver on our mission to educate, to inspire, and to empower. So thank you, Toros. Now, let me welcome in, back to the podium, our vice president for Admin and Finance, our chief fiscal officer and CFO, and the woman who I depend on to strategically use resources, and her counterpart, Ryan Heredia, our interim associate vice president and comptroller, to continue the rest of the presentation. Thank you very much for being here.
Check one, two, check one, two. Okay, well, let's thank Dr. Parham for giving us an overview of the, of what's happening here in the state of California State University Dominguez Hills. I want to take just a few minutes as we move forward just to provide an overview of our budget today. And we're somewhat scripted today because we kind of wanted to stay on time today. So, but we can interject as we need to, if possible. But our goal here is to really give a clear picture of how the university's finances are structured and how we make decisions about resource allocations. We'll start by looking at sources of revenue, where our funding comes from. For example, state appropriation, state tuition and fees, and other revenue streams. Then we'll move into, quickly, into our uses of funds, essentially, how these dollars are spent to support the mission of the university. This includes instructional programs, student services, academic support, operations, and infrastructure. And finally, I'll share a bit about the budget process, because I think that's very important, the timeline, the principles that guide us, and the way we ensure alignment with the CSU system priorities and our campus strategic plan. This overview is meant to set the foundation for the more detailed sections that follow, where we'll dig into fund actuals, balances, and projections for the upcoming year. But before we move any further, I'd like to extend a warm and hearty welcome to our new university budget director, Ms. Chriselle Vea. Chriselle lives near our campus. We're so fortunate to have her and officially joined us yesterday. So we won't make her do a presentation today, but she will have one tomorrow. So Chriselle, stand up so everybody in the audience can see who you are. Wave to the audience. So Chriselle comes to us from the chancellor's office, bringing with her a wealth of experience and many years of providing budget support at that office. So again, please join me in welcoming Chriselle to our campus. Let's take a closer look at the General Operating Fund and the primary support that we receive for day-to-day operations here at our university. On the sources side, this fund is made up primarily of two components. Student tuition, which reflects revenues that students contribute through their enrollment. And the state allocation, which is based on our full-time equivalent students, or FTES. For 2425 and 2526, the current fiscal year, the target is set at 11,723 FTES. Within that allocation, we receive both general allocations, which are flexible and can spend, apply those broadly, and restricted allocations, which are earmarked for very specific purposes, such as our Project Rebound. We do have a Project Rebound on campus. On the uses side, these dollars are keeping our campus running. They are used to cover salaries and benefits for our faculty and staff, provide financial aid to our students, and pay for operational costs like equipment, utilities, and insurance. Simply put, this is the core funding that allows us to deliver instruction, support students, and keep the lights on. Core campus operations rely on tuition and state allocations, the foundation of CSU DH's financial stability. Next, let's see how this fits into the CSU budget process. One of the most important things to understand about our budget One of the most important things to understand about our budget is that it's not just a campus process. It's part of a much larger cycle involving the state of California, the chancellor's office, and individual campuses. At the state level, as you can see there, it's in that turquoise color, the process begins in the fall with the preparation of the annual budget plan. By January, the governor releases the proposed budget, followed by legislative budget hearings, that's a long process, in the spring. By June, the state budget is adopted, most times. At the CSU chancellor's office level, you can see that in the burgundy color there, they develop the CSU system-wide budget requests and take it to the board of trustees for approval. The chancellor's office will present the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget at its regular meeting next week, week after next. President Parham and CSU LA President Eames have been asked to contribute to this effort. So if you get a chance, tune into that. Dr. P. will deliver remarks on behalf of our campus, and he will share on the challenges and opportunities faced during the ongoing budget crises. Once the state budget is passed, you can see that in the yellow there, the chancellor's, or, excuse me, still in the burgundy, the chancellor's office issues preliminary allocations to campuses, works with all of us to identify our needs, and then releases the final allocations in July. The campus receives the final budget allocation memo in August, and AVP Heredia will cover some of that detail for twenty-five, twenty-six. At the campus level, that's in the kind of gold color, representing DH colors, our process runs in parallel. Divisions submit budget requests, which are reviewed and prioritized by the vice presidents and the university budget committee. The president makes the final approval, and then we update our multi-year plans. In August and September, each campus submits its final budget back to the chancellor's office, and that's why we have that kind of in a loop, because it is an ongoing and continuous process. Recently, due to the volatility of the state budgets and declining enrollments, and this is around the country, the CO is requiring a fiscal management plan for each campus that will be due annually by October fifteenth. So we'll be working on that as soon as we finish this today. Now, the cycle is continuous and requires close coordination between the state, the CSU, and the campus leadership. It also explains why certain decisions are dependent on when allocations are released by the state and chancellor's office. Simply put, budget decisions flow from the state to the CSU to the campus, requiring alignment and coordination at each one of these levels. Now, let's talk about the university budget committee, because they are our shared governance, one of our shared governance arms on the campus. The university budget committee, or affectionately known as the UBC, plays a central role in our process. I also want to acknowledge and thank Chair Jose Martinez, department chair and professor of economics in the College of Business and Public Policy. I don't see, I can't see Chair Martinez here today, but anyway, I wanted to give him his acknowledgement. Dr. Martinez led the committee through several exercises last fiscal year to help address the campus budget crises. Several budget reductions, along with the request to analyze campus space utilization and increase passive income and revenues, came directly from these discussions and the UBC retreat last spring. So we really want to thank him for his leadership there. The UBC is responsible for receiving, reviewing, and making recommendations to the president. Their work covers not only budgets, but also enrollment planning and both divisional and strategic plans for the university. The committee includes representatives from every division of the university. This ensures that all voices are at the table. This broad representation reflects our commitment to shared governance and transparency. Each year, UBC strives to follow a structured timeline as outlined in the executive order. No later than April first, they forward recommendations to the president for next year's expenditure plan after reviewing reports and hearing presentations from the division heads. This eight-month process ensures that the budget reflects not just one unit's priorities, but the needs of the entire university. Now, let's move very quickly into the twenty-four, twenty-five actuals to see how this played out in real time. CSUDH faced major reductions in twenty-four, twenty-five due to what we have characterized, as the president talked about, that budget or fiscal vortex. We continue to face several pressures on the budget. Ending fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-four, twenty-five, we made difficult trade-offs. The president's going to talk about this next week at the board of trustees, and reduce expenditures almost to the tune of nineteen million dollars. As we continue to close the fiscal year, we will provide the campus with the details of these reductions. We're still playing with some numbers as we go through our end-of-year audit at our next lunch and learn, and post on our transparency page the details of these reductions. Now, let's share the issues driving these reductions. First, declining enrollment. The president talked about this. Since COVID, our numbers have fallen sharply. But I'm gonna move relatively quickly through this. At the end of the day, it looks like for twenty-five, twenty-six, because of the efforts, and I know we acknowledge the student success team, and I think I saw Dr. Sanders here as well, who's heading up one of our Toral programs, and let me tell you, the engagement has paid off. Looks like we are leveling off on enrollments for twenty-five, twenty-six. I think that's an applause line right there. Second, state budget reductions. We don't have to spend a whole lot of time on this because AVP Heredia is gonna take a deep dive. We want to really, really showcase and show the campus exactly where we're getting these numbers from. And then, of course, the compensation increases. While these were all well-deserved, the rates negotiated in twenty-three raised labor costs across the CSU system without new funding to cover them. So we received a few dollars for them, but we didn't receive the full package to cover those increases. And finally, unfunded mandates, new requirements like Title IX. I don't know if Dr. Porter is here, but she has done a phenomenal job in making sure that our Title IX requirements and compliance are within order. And our Cal Mac, which she's also getting up. Also, in addition to these unfunded mandates, we have additional costs for insurance, additional costs for utilities. Everything is going up without sufficient resources to cover those. AVP Heredia is gonna talk about those, even though we will receive a tuition increase this year, we will still not be able to meet that gap. So he's going to talk about that. Together, these challenges have left us with declining revenues, rising costs, and limited flexibility. The impact of these pressures forced divisions across campus to readjust priorities. We restricted travel. Dr. P. talked about that. We reduced spending on supplies significantly. And we imposed a hiring freeze, left vacancies unsealed. We are all feeling this pinch. And reduced personnel, including the non-retention of fifteen managers and thirty-six staff. Though four of those staff positions, we're happy to say were later rescinded. I would have loved if all thirty-six of those would have been rescinded. At the same time, we have had to divert several millions of dollars, scarce one-time resources, toward major renovations and deferred maintenance. Our facilities team is here today, and they know some of these challenges that we're having, like fallen trees. Our older trees on campus don't want to stay standing, so we have to make sure that we take those down and make sure that those repairs are done. Urgent repairs to our facilities are also an issue. Without proper investment from the state, deferred maintenance quickly becomes a liability for the campus. With that context, let's move very quickly into some of these balances. This slide that was just presented shows the year-end performance. We closed the year with a seventeen point two million dollar positive balance. However, and that's a however there, I want to make sure we understand that, most of this consists of restricted or committed funds. We're gonna walk through that in just a minute. Not discretionary dollars, which we will cover very shortly. We saw some overages in academic affairs and student affairs, but these were offset by savings in other areas. Overall, we ended the year in a much more stable position than the previous year. The previous year wasn't as good because we were pivoting very quickly and couldn't make some of those adjustments in the previous fiscal year. And that still leaves us limited flexibility as we go into the next fiscal year. We wanted to highlight, because we got a request on that, to show exactly what academic affairs spent. So this next slide does, if you look down at the bottom, does balance to that number, and you will be able to see all of the colleges for twenty-four, twenty-five, and where they end it. And if you can't follow this, because we're gonna be moving relatively quickly, if you can't follow everything, these will be posted directly after today's session, and we will continue to update our transparency page. So let's move very quickly. Sometimes it's better to see this from a pictorial standpoint, but this slide does show the year-end performance in a more graphic position. We closed the year with that seventeen point two million, as I discussed. However, most of these, again, were committed funds. This chart is also gonna show that we ended the fiscal year with a two-hundred-and-thirty-one point four million dollar fund actuals. Sixty-one percent of those actuals are the state allocation. Thirty-six percent of those represent the student fees. Remember those two pots of money we just talked about? That's why we wanted to talk in sources and uses. And then, we only got two percent from cost recovery. What is that, Deb Wallace? That is money that we receive from our auxiliaries and our enterprises that, according to the executive order, we must recover those funds on behalf of the state anytime we do work for self-support services. And then, we got one percent from other revenues, and those were basically adjustments from the chancellor's office that said, we're gonna give you about three hundred thousand dollars in some revenue for things like project rebound. This slide also really does highlight how dependent we are on state support for our resources. Any shift in either of these, any shift in what we received in allocation, or any shift in enrollment, you can see what that does to the numbers. Now, let's look at these funds and how we spent them across the university. Our centrally monitored funds is budget to whole dollars, and this is what we just covered on that previous slide, to whole dollars for expenses like our benefits. And as you can see, our benefits are a large portion of that, almost sixty million dollars. We also spent two-hundred-and-forty-eight million dollars last year. And fifty-four percent of those, of course, went to the daily operations. That's what we just showed you with the divisions. Twenty-four percent of that to the benefits, and sixteen percent to financial aid for our students. And AVP Heredia is gonna cover that amount as well. So at the end of the day, what does that mean for our fund balances? Fund balances show the difference between budgeted actual and remaining funds. These basically are our financial report card at the end of the year. If you recall from our slide from twenty-four, twenty-five, the general operating fund actuals, we ended the fiscal year with almost seven point two million dollars as a fund balance. The highlighted amount of the eighteen point one million reflects other miscellaneous, as well as that fund balance, amounts totaling about nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, such as course fees, which are not considered discretionary in the general fund and have a specific purpose. For twenty-four, twenty-five, CSUDH closed with about fifty-one point nine million in balances across categories. Most of these are restricted. It's important to note that fund balances are not extra or discretionary money, mostly are already committed. And I won't go through all of these due to time constraints, but again, we will post these. But you can see parking ending with a nine million dollar balance. Those are used and are restricted dollars by the state to be used towards parking efforts. And they're using those dollars to improve the campus. For an example, Lot Six was repaid just recently, right before the students came. The student success fee, we'll transition into that really quickly, was approved and implemented over five academic years, beginning spring twenty fifteen, at the semester rate of thirty-five dollars, with incremental increases of thirty-five dollars per term through fall twenty eighteen. Beginning in fall twenty eighteen and remaining constant thereafter, the student success fee is about two-hundred-and-eighty dollars or five sixty per academic year. CSUDH uses this funding to invest in support of activities, faculty, staff, equipment, and facilities that directly impact students. For twenty-four, twenty-five, the fee ended the year with about a one million dollar deficit due to declining enrollment and fixed commitments. While this fee has been a powerful tool for student investment, we need to evaluate its allocation and its sustainability. The division did make one point five million dollar in reductions beginning in twenty-twenty-four, and as you can see, the benefits pool will need to be adjusted this fiscal year due to salary increases last year. Now, AVP Heredia is gonna walk us through the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, VP Wallace. All right. Let's dive right in. General operating fund budget. So, as we all know, the governor's budget came down, and the CSU had a one-hundred-and-forty-three point eight million dollar reduction for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. That is very unfortunate, but that's just kind of what happened. And so, that was part of that seven point nine percent that we heard about. It got reduced to three percent, and so this is what that three percent equated to. There's an intent to defer and restore that funding in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. We hope that happens. And there's also an option right now on the table for a zero-interest loan. As of today, we have no information on the CSU's decision on that, on whether they take it or forego it. So as more information comes on that, we'll be sure to update everybody. There's also a two-hundred-and-fifty-two point three million dollar compact deferral. And so, that should be for twenty-six, twenty-seven, approximately one hundred point nine million dollars, and that'll be on ongoing funding. And for fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, one hundred and fifty-one point four million dollars ongoing. So I'm gonna go through and, and I think do something that I have never done here in a forum like this for DH, and go through the twenty-five, twenty-six final budget allocation. It's coded memo B twenty-two-five dash two, along with all of its attachments, but mainly focus on the attachments. And this comes directly from the CO, and is how we determine and see what we're getting funded for, right? What those allocations from the CO that are coming to us, and how they come to us. So here's just a nice slide on that memo. And here is attachment A. I know it's a little hard to see. As VP Wallace said, these slides will be posted for everyone to see. And this is just going over kind of a high-level review of the operating budget sources for twenty-five, twenty-six. And there are two main funding sources for this. The general fund, as you see there, and tuition and fees. And these two combined make up the total operating budget, that column ten, that last one over there on the far right. It's important to note, the general fund number is a direct allocation from the CO, and the tuition and fee amounts are simply estimates. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later when we go through the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Column one, very simple, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, total operating budget. So that is the general fund and the tuition and fees for twenty-four, twenty-five. And that is two-hundred-and-forty-six million dollars. Column two is the twenty-four, twenty-five general fund total. That is the direct allocation that we received for twenty-four, twenty-five, which was one-hundred-and-forty-three million dollars. Columns three through five are the various adjustments that occur. Prior year, current year, and these could be increases or reductions, and these are all things that are gonna affect the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund total there. Column six is the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund allocation of one-hundred-and-thirty-four point eight million dollars. And this reflects those deductions from three through five based on the twenty-four, twenty-five total. Column seven is the tuition and fee revenue, and it's important to note that that was for twenty-four, twenty-five. Column eight is the estimated additional tuition revenue from fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. That's that six percent tuition increase that we know about. And they're estimating for us to receive approximately four point eight million. And so, it's very important to know that these are just estimates, right? We can't really count on these figures here. Column nine is the estimated tuition and fee revenue, which totals about one hundred and one million dollars. And then, column ten is the total operating budget, up at two-hundred-and-thirty-six million. So, kind of high level here, what does this mean for DH? At face value, what we see is our actual CSUDH general fund allocation from the CO is getting reduced by eight point four million dollars. So if you see column two there, last year was one-hundred-and-forty-three million dollars, and column six, it is now going to one-hundred-and-thirty-four million dollars. That is an eight point four million dollar reduction. Okay? And that is a pure allocation. That is money into our bank account directly from the CO. Now, we're gonna throw in the projected tuition and fee revenues, and you'll see that the total operating budget is projected to drop by ten and a half million dollars. So that's column one, two-hundred-and-forty-six million dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five, right? Budgeted, projected, and now going down to two-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars. So just right there, you can see how, coming down from the state, we're taking a hit directly on our campus and what that looks like. All right. The next one. Attachment B. So attachment B goes over the revisions to the twenty-four, twenty-five expenditures, those uses that VP Wallace was talking about, and the revenues, the sources. Reviewing everything that we see on here, we'll notice some key kind of figures that we want to highlight. Column four, that is the state-funded retirement adjustment of three point four nine eight million dollars. This directly reduced our centrally-held benefits pool for twenty-four, twenty-five, and will now, being reflected here, reduce our twenty-five, twenty-six total. Column five- Column 5 is a reversal of the one-time 2425 general fund reduction. We kind of held this centrally. It's a net wash for us, so we won't truly feel the effect of this, the negative from last year and the positive from this year. Column 7 is the sum of columns 1 through 6, showing the total of $2.38 million, right? And that is a reduction. And column 8 just repeats that number. And you'll see that this number over here, directly from attachment B, feeds over to attachment A, column 1. I mean, 3, sorry. All right? You see it right there. So that's kind of the detail on that number. So now we'll move into attachment C. This is the 2526, again, expenditure, so uses and revenue sources adjustments for the fiscal year. Columns 1 through 4 are the required operating costs. And we highlight this to that these are going to increase, right? These are increasing costs that are required for operations, right? There's nothing we can really do about them. Column 6 shows fiscal year 2526 SUG adjustment. That's the State University Grant, basically our financial aid adjustment, which is reducing our allocation. Column 7 shows the net increase in expenditures of $2.924 million from columns 1 through 6. So that just nets it across in totals. Column 8 is the estimated additional tuition revenue from fiscal year 2526. That's that 6% that we're looking to see, that 4.8%. Column 9 is the general fund adjustment. So this is taking column 7, the mandatory $2.2 million in costs, and reducing it by column 8. And that, in turn, reduces our general fund allocation by $1,956,000. Column 10, this is the 2526 general fund reduction of the $4.38 million. That is, and we'll go over that a little more in detail in a little bit, but that's our campus, you know, share of that $143 million that the CSU took in that reduction once the governor came out with his budget, the final budget. Columns 11 through 13 are for reference only. 11 kind of shows the sum of columns 8 through 10. Column 12 is a projected estimate on unfunded compensation increases related to employee placement into the new CSUEU step structure for units 2, 5, 7, and 9. So that's an unfunded dollar amount that our campus will have to take care of in 2526. Column 13 is simply taking column 11 minus column 7 minus column 12 to show our campus kind of budget gap. With everything that's happening, with our required operating costs going up, despite having that little 6% tuition revenue increase, right? We have various adjustments and everything that net to still us having a $4.8 million budget gap that we have to kind of figure out. And you'll see here, these numbers. The 1.96 is the general fund adjustment, the 4.384, our campus portion of that $143 million, and how it directly feeds back over to that attachment A. And that's over here in column 4 and 5, okay? So we'll move on. Attachment D. This is the 2526 enrollment and tuition and fee revenue. So this is a source. But we want to remember that, again, this is estimated, right? This is estimated, this is a best guess based off of what we'll see. Column 1 has our resident FTEs that VP Wallace referenced, right? And our target kind of maintains the same at $11,723 for 2425. And column 5 shows that for 2526, it's not changing. And in fiscal year 2425, non-resident fees, we get the total of our 2526 estimated FTEs of $11,972, that column 7. So that's 5 and 6 added to get column 7 there. On the right side here, under tuition, these numbers are reported by the DH Budget Office back in 2425, utilizing 2324 actuels, along with a point-in-time reference of what 2425 looked like when that was due, to kind of guesstimate, right? That our tuition revenue would be about $81 million, or $80 million. And then there's other fees, which include, which are things like not tuition. And this includes like the health center fee, various course fees. And it's important to note that that number, not all of it's part of our operating fund, right? And we'll go through that. There's attachment E. This is the 2526 State University Grant. So this is SUG. This is our financial aid allocation. It's a total of $31,966,000. Keep this number in the back of your mind. We'll see this a little later as I dive into our budget. But that's just something to know and a little detail about that on the financial aid side. Attachment F is our campus lottery allocation. So that's just, you know, from the California Lottery. We get allocated a dollar amount directly from the chancellor's office. This stayed consistent with last fiscal year, as you can see here, with 1.3 million, almost $4 million. And this also is not part of our general operating fund. And finally, the last attachment to that memo is attachment G. And this is our general fund reduction, which you can see here was the $4,384,000. So you'll see that the state budget reduced the CSU by $143.8 million. And this reduction was spread out, bulleted here. The chancellor's office, you'll see at the bottom there, took about 8% of that reduction. And they reduced their chancellor's office and system-wide programs by $18.3 million. Then they gave system-wide initiatives, approximately $12.2 million, set aside for potential federal actions that could adversely affect the CSU operating budget in the future. So they kind of safeguarded those funds. And they took the remaining $137.7 million and equally, just gave everyone a 1.8% reduction of their 2425 total operating base budget, right? So that is that $4.3 million you see there. Our 2425 operating, that's that hypothetical tuition number, plus the allocation that comes from the CO of $248 million. 1.8% of that is the 4.384 that we're seeing on our campus. And that number there goes directly into column 5 that we see there. So you've kind of seen how our 2425 total budget of $143 million has been kind of piecemeal taken away by no fault of our own, but just through all these various things that are happening between the state budget, enrollment numbers, revenue decline, et cetera. And we're now at a total base of $134 million. And keep that number in your mind, because you'll see that as I go into the 2526 budget. So let's move over to this. So you'll see here for 2526, that $134,838,000 allocation coming directly from the state is up there in green in our total budget column. You have our student fees. That is an estimate, like I said, we're projecting, kind of similar to what we had last fiscal year. And we're kind of keeping it steady as a conservative estimate with all the hard work that we've been doing to maintain our enrollment numbers. And then our cost recovery as well. We are projecting that that to stay fairly consistent with last fiscal year as well and say that we're going to collect that. So in that top bucket there, you're seeing that we're projecting our actuels to be of what we're collecting, right? And up there as well, you'll see there's a balance from prior year. That's that remaining balance, our ending balance in fiscal year 2425 now coming over here. But the caveat to that is that's buried, right? As VP Wallace said, in other centrally-monitored. And it's not just, you know, a free balance that's there to be utilized. Some of it is earmarked and set aside for very specific things. We'll go over into this next area, the divisions. So with all the hard work that we've done over the past couple fiscal years, we've now kind of honed in on a total budget number for the divisions at about $113,876,000 and split accordingly between the divisions. Based, as of 8/29, you know, with some July actuels and, you know, consistently talking with the divisions and the VPs and the fiscal officers and the ARMS, those are kind of our projected actuels right now going into, you know, the end of 2526 and our projected year-end balance, right? Projecting approximately $5 million in a deficit. And we're hoping that, you know, we're working with the VPs, we're working with all the divisions, the fiscal officers and ARMS, and we're trying to ensure that we have a balanced budget, right? We don't have that right now. We're just looking at that high level preliminarily as of kind of July and what we have, you know, estimated. And then into centrally-monitored here, you'll see our pool for benefits stays approximately the same. Utilities goes up. Financial aid, that's that number that I told you, that SUG number that just get allocated to us, that's that $31,966,000. It's right there. Whatever we don't use up in, you know, allocating to students, that'll be that carry forward that you saw from 2425. And then that other centrally-monitored is in there with its projected actuels as well. And now we'll kind of look at this, you know, graphically in a pie chart. Our sources are $222 million. Our state allocation is approximately 60% of that, right? So $134 million, almost $135 million. Our student fees make up 38% of that, $84 million, and that cost recovery. And you'll note that this does not include the prior-year balance, right? This is pure sources that we're getting, you know, not that we're carrying over. And then you'll see here the uses. So similarly, we have, you know, other centrally-monitored at 11% with $27 million. The divisions are at 48% with approximately $114 million. Benefits is at 26%, at $61 million. Our utilities are at 2% at $5 million. And aid with that number that comes from the CO, approximately $31,966,000. All right. Questions? I know I went fast.
There's a pop quiz.
But I hope that kind of helped a little more with me walking through these numbers, kind of systematically, step by step, and just to see where everything, you know, correlates, where stuff's coming from and how it maps to some of those other spreadsheets that we're presenting as well. I will also now monitor the chat, just in case. So any questions? Or was I that efficient?
Who has a headache right now listening to all those numbers? Where are we at?
Social teller world.
Yeah. What's important to remember, if we can try to consolidate all this back down and where we started this presentation. First of all, we are committed to being as transparent as we can be about the fiscal affairs and the budget of this campus. And so I want to thank Ryan for the tremendous work that he's doing, certainly Nick and Tony Jakes before him.
Thank you, thank you.
And really Deb Wallace, who I want to compliment again, because what I asked her, I said, "I can get an accountant to count dollars." When I needed somebody who was good at the strategic use of resources. And so when you think about overall, what do these numbers suggest? There are a couple trends that are there. Number one, we know already that the state is providing us insufficient dollars to do what we need to do. And let me make another caveat to that too, if you're keeping score. When we get into, you'll see it happening next week when we get into trustee meetings. In the CSU system, we are good at being able to ask for what we think the state will give us. That is a different question than what it takes to actually run a campus. If they ask me what it takes to run a campus, the number would be substantially higher. You can see our expenses. We have insufficient revenues. When the state allocation's going down, when we have fewer students, that $11,723 number is a full-time after E. People say, "But wait a minute, Deb Wallace, we got 14,000 students on campus." Because some of those are half-time, some of those, right? Are not full-time students. Our funded FTE count at $11,723, we are below that number right now for full-time equivalents. The more, right, below we get, the fewer dollars we have coming in from tuition. We have stopped and stabilized the hemorrhaging. We're not losing as many students as we lost over the last three years, close to a 17% decline. Our numbers now are up to about maybe 6%. So we've restored a little bit of that. But we are not at the $11,723 number for full-time FTE. When you add to the students and then add to the state, we have fewer revenues. But if you looked at the lines, I think that Ryan pointed out, that were in yellow, what we project for the budget and what our projected actuels are, you'll see those numbers were substantially higher. We are still spending at a rate beyond the resources that we have, which is why I want to compliment all the VPs. I want to compliment the deans. I want to compliment the department chairs, who really have joined with us, along with UBC and others, to say, "We are not only in a fiscal crisis, but we are having to reestablish what is a new normal for CSUDH." And that new normal is going to have us have to right-size the campus. We can no longer spend dollars we do not have. That's what that represents. The second theme you should have seen there was also about the reserves. Every now and then we get, right, drama about our fiscal reserves. Nobody on this campus, not all of you, not all of you, not the folk who are listening to us via livestream, make sufficient money, right, in their salary every year. So I'm a big proponent, have argued vociferously for the compensation increases that we have received, even as minimal as they have been. What I also know, however, is simple math. If I have $15 and I pay each of you $5 apiece, everybody has a job. If you argue via your union, "Dr. P, I want $7.50," fine with me. If I got the same $15, it means one of you is not going to have a job. That's what we are dealing with right now and having to lay off. How many MPPs? 15. How many staff? 36. 51 people, four of which we've been able to restore. Thank goodness. But if for me, I would have restored the whole 51. We're having to cut expenses. 80% of our budget is almost personnel. So we're having to reduce those expenses in a way that makes that bigger difference. That's why it's a challenge for us. So we want you to make sure, we see that we do not have those reserves. When you hear Ryan talk about reserves and you hear stories out there about the system and the campus is hoarding money and we have $20 million in reserves, whatever, the $17 million we have, which is actual, how much of that is in student financial aid, Ryan?
I believe it's probably $4 million.
Right. So reduce it by 4. Well, if you look at the other costs that are already encumbered, the amount of flexibility we have as a whole campus for reserves is about, what, $6, $7 million?
$7.6.
$7.6 million. In any operation you run, whether you're nonprofit or for-profit, they argue that you should have how much reserves, Deb?
Minimum six months.
Six months reserves we should have. Multiply our operating expenses by six months, we should have. And what we have as a campus right now is $7.6 million. We do not have it. People will argue, third point. But wait a minute, you were made whole. Because the state, even though we reduced your allocation, we're going to give you the money in a $143.8 million loan. Really? Because you can afford to take out a loan and a second mortgage on your house if we're not going to do that. Because you can afford to take out a loan and a second mortgage on your house if what? You have the ability to pay that back. Looking at what Ryan just talked to you about, our actuals, and Deb Wallace talked to you about our auxiliaries, what's the likelihood that we could pay back our portion of that $143.8 million loan? It is about zero. So I'm not a proponent of being able to take the loan, although we're still waiting to see what the system's going to do, because of some politics and that, too. So we give you these things, not to bore you with all the numbers or to give you a headache, but to really give you a sense of ultimate transparency. No other campus, I think, is doing what we are doing. And we get lots of questions from other campuses, like, "Y'all really going to share with them all that?" Sure. This is open book information. But I don't want you to think that we aren't working on your behalf to make sure that we can try to right-size this campus and still do the wonderful things that we can do. Beyond Dr. Franklin, who I asked to stand up because his team has done a wonderful job on enrollment and also with the new culture for the Health and Wellness Center, I also want to stand up Dr. Sanders. Where is she? Because lights are bright in here. Sabrina Sanders, stand up for me. Keep standing up for me, please. I know you hate this. But we stole her, I stole her, I have to be, take credit for that, from the Chances Office, because we knew how talented she was. But she is being able to run for the last several years our, what essentially wants a Turo program. We've sent letters to a whole bunch of students who started their college, stomped out and never finished degrees. And the letter simply said, big picture on it, "Your journey's not done." And she has helped to recruit, right, hundreds of students now who are raising these numbers because if we didn't have those students adding to the ones we've had, we would not be in the shape that we are in right now. She deserves a big round of applause for all those students she's bringing home. I've said enough. I want you to ask Ryan and Deb some questions, anything that you don't understand and know. Are we still waiting on what the proposal's going to be? It'll come out this September. The governor's budget will come out in January. We'll argue with the backdoor conversations with the legislature between January and April or early May, and then the May revise will come out with the budget for what the May revise is, and then we'll get the real budget late June, early July, that'll then flow to us by about August. That's the budget cycle that you see for next year. But for this year, we will still be in reduction term. You saw some of those brackets around academic affairs. You saw some of those brackets around IT. It means that based on the allocation that they have, what we are spending now has to be reduced. That's true. And so we're looking to try to look at those kind of spaces to do that. And that's why I want to thank our deans, our department chairs, who've done just your person's work at helping us get to that space. Where we'll end up, don't know. Are we arguing for more resources? Absolutely. But right now, those are the fiscal realities that we have. We have a question here, Dean Kim. Screaming, I'll repeat the thing for those who are online.
Is it hard to see, or would we know, that we're operating under this situation, probably now, people are...
Oh, here we go. We got a mic coming.
And I was quickly calculating, and then that equates more than 300 of course sections. And then as a dean who really look at the data and class sizes and course fill-up rates, it's hard to see that all across colleges cutting over 300 sections of courses. So my question, President Parham, I asked this question before. What does, what does that mean, right sizing? Like, are you asking us really not to drive enrollment now because we need to cut the course of sections? That's my question.
We are going full speed ahead. In the middle of what we are doing, hand the mic to Dr. Franklin for a moment. I need him to give me two minutes of conversation. Stand up for me and talk about Discover Dominguez. And what we're, when you talk about driving enrollment and what we're trying to do, the goal is not simply to passively sit by and let people apply and then try to do the work we're trying to retain. I want to excite people about what we're doing here at Dominguez Hills. So we are now on an all-out sprint for that. Give me a quick minute on that.
So on October 11th, we're having what we are calling Discover Dominguez Hills. It's our second installment of Discover Dominguez Hills. The last time we did it, it was to inaugurate a president, and we had close to 3,000 folks who came and who saw and who ended up then matriculating into the university. We're not only bringing it back because it's necessary, we're bringing it back because we want to now begin to show folks who CSU Dominguez Hills is and how to not only get here. So we're trying to boost enrollment on a number of different levels, and Discover Dominguez is one of them. One of the most important things to recognize, though, is that Discover Dominguez Hills is just a recruitment activity. We're going to need your help, your involvement and your engagement in order to yield students. But once we yield students, we have to hold on to the students that we have. And that's the most important piece around. And that's why I want to just do a quick shout-out for those online and those in the room. On October 1st, we're having Enrollment Summit Number Two. Enrollment Summit Number One was last February. This is going to be your opportunity to get involved, get engaged. So issues like Discover Dominguez Hills, some of our yield activities, some of our recruitment activities, we need you to bring them, but we also need you to help us hold on to them. That's my two minutes.
Thank you so much. So, Dean Kim, in answer to your question specifically, no, we are not trying to say, "Let's tap down enrollment." What we're trying to do is recognize that there are realities that we have to confront, right? One reality is LAUSD is producing fewer students who graduate. The pipeline is shrinking. Even our Huron consultants, you'll see that data as we continue to reveal it, have suggested that the trend line suggests you need to go back to recruiting more transfer students than you do full-times, because the full-times pipeline is shrinking. So we're having to do that. But are we out there? Yes. I think it, once people get a taste of what Dominguez Hills is offering, hopefully they're going to come and want to be a part of that. So I'm going on a tour with DeBor Brandon and her team, and I'm going out to schools and high schools, I'm going out to community colleges, we're going out to community centers, we got faith-based centers coming, we got nonprofit folk coming, everybody. So the October 11 date is a culmination of all those efforts we're going to be engaging in the next several weeks to get people excited about what you do. And that's why we have every college reflected, yours included, in Discover Dominguez Day, where I want to show off the best and the brightest of what we have. We're going to have our groundskeepers. Thank y'all for what you do for keeping this place clean, right? Thank you for that. We're going to have our classrooms cleaned, our restroom cleaned, our custodians and other folk who do that work and maintenance folk do a phenomenal job. There are not enough of them. You've seen some of the staff that we've had to cut to do that, and they continue to work. I want you to give them a round of applause as well. They are doing fabulous work. Thank y'all. Nobody right now has enough to do everything we want to do. But we always have sufficient resources to do enough. Are we going to try to grow enrollments? The answer is yes. Right? But we can only grow to the degree, right, that we put effort in to try to move that along, which is what we're doing. Our colleges and folk are out doing work, so bravo to that. But what Deb Wallace can't do is manage a budget on aspiration. She has to manage a budget on actuals. And I have been, right, literally pushing her to say, "Deb, we cannot continue to spend the way that we've been spending." And she's been pushing me, "Mr. President, we can't continue to spend in the way we've been spending, because we are over... When we take temporary numbers and we have put people on, we have 17% fewer students, but faculty lines that are almost the same as they were five years ago. With fewer students, we can't have the same faculty line, staff lines that are almost the same, right? That's what's being reduced. So we have to bring everything into scale, and then if we continue to grow, then we can hire back what we need to be able to meet that moment. But are we reducing sections? The answer is yes. Are we having classes that will, right, if you have a class that's eight or 10 people or something, unless it's a special graduate seminar or something you have to do, we're trying to grow enrollments, but you're going to have to collapse two sections. I don't want to destroy Psych 101 as an example. I'm not eliminating the course. But if you had 20 sections before, and now we can get by with 12, we're going to put more students in the 12 sections we have to be able to do that. Doesn't mean our faculty are going to have to teach a few more folk. The answer is yes. But we can't afford to hire the lecturers, right, for those 20 sections when they have enrollments that look like this instead of consolidating them into that. Is it going to mean that our students are going to have less flexibility to get those? The answer is yes. But we all got to tighten our belts to do that, right? That's the fiscal realities that we're in until they change. And that vortex is not going away anytime soon, right?
So we have two questions from the chat really quickly. Did you have a follow-up?
So actually, I have a follow-up to you about what you presented, but you can respond to the chat.
Okay, let me take, one is quickly, is there a public link for Discover Dominguez Hills?
Yes. That website will be active on Monday.
The website will be active on Monday. So yes, there is a public link, but we'd like everybody, this is open house, y'all. This is our chance to show off the campus. I want people salivating at the thought of coming to get what we offer here at Dominguez Hills. It's all of our job to make sure that our grounds are clean, our classrooms are tight, the campus is beautiful, and we got everybody on display that day saying, "Come get some of what I'm teaching. Come get some of what we are servicing students with. Come get some of what we're doing here in the Turo Nation." That's what we're hoping to do.
And then we have one more question really quickly online.
We got one more online, and then we'll go to Dean Carone.
With the general operating fund budget, having a starting balance of about 17.2 million and an ending balance of 16.2 is our actual overall loss for the year, only 1 million, albeit imbalanced between centrally monitored with a large projected surplus and uses, divisions having a loss of about 5.4. So that's a great question. Just figuratively speaking, right, I think we have to go back to just the principles of CSU DH operating as a fiscally sound entity, right? And so you see that red line right there, the state allocation and the student fees, right? That is where we need to live. We need to live in, within our means, within those numbers. And so really, from the 222 million that you're saying, you need to take 3 million off of that. And that needs to be where we're at and where we're living. And if you see at the bottom there, our projected actuals are up at 223 million. And that's if everyone is holding this line, right? Because you have to also remember, this is projected, right? This is very hypothetical, very early on, right? And so we don't know what those ending numbers could be. And our true reserve is only approximately 7 million of that 17. As you remember, that 17 is made up of a lot of other things, right? Centrally held benefits, right? Just other earmarked items that we can go through. So as you also heard President Parham talking, we need minimum six months of reserves. We're dipping into our reserves again. In theory, it's going down. We should be growing this number, right? So that's a great question, and I hope that helped kind of explain that out.
So my follow-up is about the projected deficit of 5. something million. Is this something to do with us not getting compact funding this year? If we receive, if we would have received that funding, then we would have been fine?
The, go ahead, Ryan.
No, go for it.
The answer to the question is related to the initial vortex. When he talks about, and Deb talked about, the sources of funding, to the degree that we have insufficient students, we have fewer tuition dollars. To the degree that the state is cutting what we get, we have less money in those allocation areas. Those are the two principal areas that were there. We haven't even gotten to the other five. Like, when you look at the grants that we're now losing and reducing as a result of the federal government, right? Thank goodness for, where's Eva? There's Eva. For Vice President Sechikova, the amount of dollars that we're raising relative to philanthropy. Bravo for that, because we're trying to be more self-determined about how we support scholarships for students as well. But those, any time those two funding balances go down, not funding balances, funding allocations go down, right, you're going to see fewer dollars in that space. The answer is yes.
Yeah, I think the other piece to that is, too, that if you noticed on that slide that Ryan was showing about the tuition increase, in theory, we should have gotten that $4.8 million to offset some of this. But if you really see how those increases were going, our increases for health premiums, all of that good stuff, are outpacing that number. This was the first year with tuition increases that the CSU really saw those costs outpace that number. So technically, we will get none of those dollars. But to your question, I think, Dean Kim, yes. If, if those expenses weren't outpacing some of this revenue that we are getting, we could better buffer that number. But this is kind of the state of the, of the country. It's not just...
We've got time for one more question. Dean Carone, you had a question?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. P. Thank you, VP Wallace. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate the deep dive into the budget and the transparency. It's really valuable. So, thank you. Thank you, Dean Kim, for your question. I was thinking exactly along the same lines. So just a couple of comments and then a question at the end. You mentioned the increase in retention of our students, and you also mentioned that we have the same number of faculty. I think there's a causal relationship between those two things. That the good work that the faculty do and that the staff do to hold on to our students and how preciously they hold them, I think there is a causal link between those two In my own college, our class schedule in Fall '25 is 12% smaller than it was in Fall '24. And so we're doing all the things that you were talking about. And so there are valued lecturer faculty members that are not here on campus this fall that were here last fall. And so there is a real human element to all of the numbers that we're talking about. And so I think it's important that we remember that there are people behind the spreadsheets as well. So just a question at the end. Dr. P, you've mentioned several times you're with us until the end of December, and then you have the next chapter in your adventure. I noticed that we have a bunch of meetings coming up to talk about academic affairs budget. We have meetings to talk about enrollment summits. We have all of these things. Provost LePolt gave us a long list of events yesterday in the Senate. But I guess what I don't, what I haven't been able to put together in my mind is sort of like a puzzle. How do all these things work together in a coordinated plan of how we're going to get to this reimagined university of the future, right? How do all of these elements fit together in a comprehensive way? And I'm thinking of the great work that the campus did around our strategic plan. There was a roadmap that said, "We're going to go through these various phases, we're going to talk to all the members of our campus community, and at the end, we will have this vision for the future and a roadmap for where we want to go." I'm still trying to put together all of the pieces of the puzzle to see how all these things fit together, you know, to deliver a similar sort of consequential vision and roadmap for where we're going to go.
Yeah, thank you for the question and the comments. So real briefly, first of all, I want to say thank you and acknowledge the amount of work you and others have done relative to trying to keep pushing down the budget expenditure side of the house. So we are making progress on that. We aren't done yet, but we're making progress just because of the allocations. It is nobody's fault. And yes, you are right that it contributes to the retention that we have done having those faculty there. But there are multiple sources of errands that contribute to that, right? We've changed and modified instructional methodologies. We've looked at different systems of pedagogy. We have done advising in ways that are different, that are more focused instead of central. We have now made college-based advising that's there. I mean, there are lots of factors that contribute to the higher retention. And literally that higher retention, as I told you two years ago, is saving jobs. That's absolutely true. And had we not doing the higher retention numbers, we'd be even in worse shape, I think, than we are now. So that's true, and I thank everybody for that sacrifice. That's real. What we are doing now is we moved toward your question, which is, what you are looking for is a kind of coming together, if you will, of all these diverse factors to look at that. This campus worked with the Chances Office, and we were blessed to have the Chances Office contract with a group called Huron. Because they had contracted with them, and the Chances Office agreed to pay 50% of the cost, that we only had to pay 50% of, we then went and engaged in a contract with them to come help them do some of the study. Huron has no emotional investment in this campus, right, in ways in which we do. It's not parallel. What they do have is an objective analysis about what it is that the campus needs to be focused on, what trend lines look like outside in terms of high school, community college pipelines, they know what workforce demand looks like, they have all those things that they can put... They have all those things that they can put together in a set of recommendations. What we also know is we have tremendous expertise and intellectual horsepower on this campus in the realm of our faculty and our staff. So we stood up, I stood up, let me take the responsibility for that and blame, two parallel committees. One, there was Huron that took a look at the campus. The second is a committee to reimagine the future of Dominguez Hills that is happening, right, last year as well. Those two committees now have data that they have presented, and we will be rolling out and presenting in these various town halls. What I reminded the Academic Senate yesterday when I was there is that consultants do not make policy. We make policy. Ultimately, I have to sign off on everything. But what I need is for my sign-off to be informed by your thinking. So we are taking those committee reports, from Huron and the Committee to Reimagine, out on the road. And the roadshow will allow us to present them in forms like this, and people will write in online and give us feedback about the recommendations that they've provided. And some of the feedback is going, yeah, that makes sense, we should do that. Some of the feedback is going to be, mm, that's a dumb idea. We can't do that because. Whatever the feedback is, where to consolidate all that? And so that by the time we get to mid-November-ish, we'll have all of that there, and we will have a, hopefully, determination about where we're going to go to right-size the campus. The budget piece is only one part of that. But part of what we're going to have to do is look at, should we be offering more things that we don't offer? Should we not offer some things that we currently do? All that is going to be in that mix. But I need everybody to help inform us about that. Are we still guided by the strategic plan? The answer is yes. That is a magnificent document. That a hundred and, right, of hours of, you know, work and other stuff they put in, thirty-two people, I think, participated in that committee, chaired by Kim Costino and Matt Smith, who put that brilliant document together, going far together. So that is still going to be our blueprint, and we will manage to that. But also, contextually, Dr. Franklin always reminds us, content, context informs content. Contextually, we have to manage that strategic plan in the realm of these fiscal realities that we have and the pressures we have from both the Chances Office and the state to be able to manage our resources. So hopefully, by the end of the year, we will do that so that we will not pass on to whoever the new lead is going to be. As I take my lead, right? Any of the hardest decisions that they have to make, we'll be able to get some of those done in advance of that and say, here's a course that we're charting, right, for our future. What we'll also do, I don't have any word yet. I assume they'll inform us once the trustees meet and whatever about what new leadership is going to look like. I expect to hear something about an interim appointment late September, early October-ish. They'll probably give us ninety days. We'll know who the interim leader is going to be. And then we are number five out of seven on the list. There are seven vacancies right now for presidents in the CSU system, seven. That's literally one-third of the twenty-two campuses we have left. So we're number five. So they will likely put an interim in. They'll be there for half a year or even a full year, maybe, depending on what the Chances Office decides and what their capacity is to conduct all these searches. And then they'll come with a full search. Your opportunities to decide who you want in your next leader is to show up to whenever they host the open forum that they did even before I arrived here. In the same way, that is your voice. To say, yes, we want some more of that, or no, hell no, don't bring us no more of that. That's your choice. But we think that'll come and have some clarity, certainly toward the end of this fall semester. But we're still keeping the strategic plan alive. That blueprint is still good. We'll have a consolidation once we go through these recommendations from Huron and from the Committee to Reimagine the Future. And those recommendations and input you provide will then be the source of the decisions we'll make moving forward. But that's all of our job to weigh in on that. We need everybody feeling like they have a part to do that because we need all your input. And that's the best way we make decisions. With that, any final words, Ryan? Deb Wallace?
I think that's it. Again, we put up acknowledgements because this is a Herculean effort trying to get, you know, an hour's worth of presentation. But I tell you, Ryan became the interim AVP just a couple of months ago, and I am so proud of him. This, this is when you're grooming the next CFOs and things like that. We put them in these spaces, these uncomfortable spaces for them. But I'm really, really proud of you, Ryan. I've been working with Ryan a very long time. We worked at Cal State Northridge together, but we've been, we've been trying to hold it down together for a while. But our facilities team, our IT team, Dr. Franklin, Dr. Gammage,